Um, anyway, so I will call the meeting to order. Um, first of all, we need to approve the agenda for the meeting today. I need a.
I move we approve the agenda.
All in favor? Okay, public discussion. I don't. So I think moving on to the real meat of the meeting is the policy review for the confidentiality policy. And I don't know. I think a lot of work went into this. It seems like a well thought out issue. Can we go back? So we have called called the meeting to order and we got to public discussion and no one was here, but you just barely missed it.
I don't want to say anything.
Oh, you don't want to say anything?
You know me already. Thank you for.
Well, I don't know you. I assume you're not being facetious.
I'm not.
Okay, well, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on to the policy review. Sir, anyone who wants to present an overview of how this was approached or board members who have questions.
Provide an overview of just one change that will have to happen. The date that's revised needs to be the 23rd and not the 21st. That changed. But I'm just going to go over confidentiality privacy. It's a really important policy for us. We use it much every day in our practice. It's an important form of intellectual freedom. Despite all of the edits that are on here, most of it is grammar and maybe the last time we capitalized everything and now I'm going back to not capitalizing everything. But a couple of big changes that are in here are explaining a little bit more about what personally identifiable information is, just giving a little bit of a fuller picture that we have a privacy website. Patrons can access that goes through every single piece of data that we collect and why we collect it and how we get rid of it. The other thing we wanted to do was just to clarify who the custodian of the library records is according to the attorney general. There was a question about that in 1980. It's the library director. It's not a designate. So we had. We wanted to also bring in the library bill of rights and interpretations, the freedom to read and freedom of statements. This is, it's also important to put that in here. That's in the collection development policy. It's in our meeting room. We wanted to, or excuse me, internet policy. We wanted to put that in here too. If we were referred to that when we are providing procedures or explaining things. We, any changes that have been made, such as we have the security cameras in the library, Iowa City Department does have access, even though they don't feed them. We wanted to be upfront about that. I mean, if they don't feed them on an ongoing basis, they're not just saying they're monitoring it, right? And we also want to just tell patrons that we will be continually watching Iowa's legislation that relates to confidentiality and privacy of library users and let them know if any changes are made for our privacy policy because of those changes.
And there are a few additions here that I want to positively call out. Sorry. The ending of eight oh two D, just making sure that you're there, you're including explicit citations by Iowa code really helps a lot. I like that. Additionally, when you call out the library bill of rights at eight oh two three, fantastic. And then any ALA. There was one more. Eight oh two, three, four scrutiny, embarrassment or intimidation. All of those are just great explicit ways of just really tightening this up. And I really appreciate it.
The original policy just said station and who don't want their data provided to other people for a variety of reasons.
Do you anticipate? It's hard. It's hard to anticipate anything that might happen, any legislative encumbrances, but with this paid any necessary changes to this, given the current legislative session?
Not the current legislative session, but one thing that I think will come up is the relationship between a guardian and a child's account. Right now state law protects a child's account from oversight of a parent that is protected. It's considered private. State library deems that too. So it's their interpretation of state law is that when a child checks something out, a parent does not have access to that information unless it goes into filled status. In that the parent has to be provided a list of things that they're paying for.
Because they're financially.
Financially obligated to that. There's a potential that that could change. There is a friction point, I think, with parents sometimes when we're asking.
Can we maintain borrowing like past borrowing records for patrons?
We do not. We do have an opt in service in our catalog that you that a patron has to go in and turn on and they can turn it off at any point and it wipes out. But we ourselves in our system do not maintain a running stream.
I wanted to ask about retention in general. And I know in the page on the left, every record has its retention. Any point mentioning that in this policy? I'm not really advocating for that. It just, it occurred to me in reading the policy. How long's this stuff kept? And then I had to go search. Where am I trying?
Um, we could mention in the policy that we keep a retention record.
Yeah, that there is a list. It's available.
I think that would calm some people down and say, basically, we don't keep it unless you are directly asking us to. It might understand that as soon as, for example, a material is returned, that it is taken off an individual's record.
Yeah, it's actually. There's just nine million records in each of an individual retention period. So I don't know. I don't know if anyone else would care.
So I wanted to an eight oh two point four, point three, four, point four. You said we're embarrassed. Wondered that was the appropriate word if it was more harassment because embarrassment to me has a meaning of it was a humiliation component in the word embarrassment for the actual borrower. And I wonder if it was more harassment. This work.
From the American Library Association.
As of then, I'd rather be consistent. Okay. My second question was the retention. We don't actually destroy mainly because of the bedbug policy.
We.
Be retained a little.
Sort of. So the Sierra does, once you check in a book, it takes off your record. But if I looked at an individual item, so it goes to the shelf, I could look it up. I can find out what the last patron was, but if the next person checks it out, it clears it out for a while.
We would remember, but in the past, we've been able to go back through adjacent items. On a shelf or a bedbug.
No, it's.
To find the book source.
It's not, um, yes and no. So if someone else checks out that book.
Right, then it's different. But like when we found the bedbugs, we were able to find out which within a few books that were adjacent to each other. Who a few of those books had come from what home was recently. So we had. Right. So we knew who the last borrower had been.
Right, well.
So the record's not gone.
With that bedbug specific incident, that patron had brought back like 75 materials all at once. And that's how it was within a day that they had brought all these materials back. They had went on vacation.
But the, but the idea is when they, I want to make sure everyone understands when the book is returned, the record does not disappear. We have a way of going back. We took those books out, which if those records were subpoenaed for other reasons, we have records.
Let me just see if I understand. So once I return something, you can't say, what's the last thing Tom Rockland have? But you could conceivably read a record of every book showing who the last person had it was and then search that for Tom. Right?
So for sensitive materials, if they were returned, we could find out.
Right, someone really wanted to know.
Took the rest. And I'm not saying we have a better policy. I just, I just want to make sure we understand. It's not a completely clean. Maybe the best isn't.
It would have to pass the muster of, you know.
Right.
And.
Which in these days, I
Don't. There are court cases that do say what can pass a subpoena and what can't. And I think that that would be a good question for the city attorney's office. When we talked to the state library about that just recently, they, they said that they're rarely happening because.
Right, it rarely happens.
We find that information other ways.
Yes.
Second filter of this is I know it will bump out if another patron does it, but after a specific amount of time, we use that data to, because there have been times where I can't come in here and the book has not come out. So I did wonder Sierra, you can play with that for us.
I'm just, I know, I'm just.
I like that as a.
Privacy.
We push that in this, it's strong, more strongly in the, in the lane of privacy. If, if there's something we could tweak there to get more patron privacy.
I don't know if patrons should understand everything, but we need to know.
Yeah.
As a group. What we have.
And we could ask Sierra about what the. Or is it not working at all?
Well, we're not wanting to pay in, right?
Yeah, I guess.
Or a time period, right?
Right, for, for some. Or we accept the risk and we don't.
Yeah. Sounds like a good thing to explore.
Yeah, I was just surprised during the bedbug days that we thought about this issue that we could go back and nail how we have the chose and we need to do as a public health measure, but the fact that we are able to do this.
But you do start with, I mean, you could theoretically do what Tom said, I think, but you do start with the item. You don't start with.
Yes, we do.
Let's see what Tom has checked out. You have an ABC children's book and it's got.
But let me give you an extreme example. If you found a book that may have been used in criminal activity, or there's a layout in the book that would lead someone to think this could have given information towards perpetrating a crime. You could, I mean, this, this isn't that unrealistic. This happened in the 1960s. Um, you could find out who had read the book most recently.
But I think domestic does require a subpoena and I think, you know, that.
But we need to know what we own. I'm saying like this may be our best policy, but we need to understand what our system is for us. And that was not a children's book. Those were not children's books.
Well, I hope.
Yeah, the, the information in the 1960s was captured. You, in the back of the book, everybody's name.
Right, we're a different system, right?
Um, so if you have a book checked out five times this year and we only have the last patron, whether or not they can tie that specifically to that specific.
Right, but if we add something. But we should keep what we need. In that.
I think all we need to do is just talk to Sierra and see if there's anything we can do to galvanize.
Yeah, right.
We need to see, but that's it.
But then I think there is good discussion about, well, how long do we want to keep zero a little bit?
Yeah, I want to have a debate. Sure.
And you want to point out, we keep many, many backups, days of that.
So again, we have, we have records that can go through everything.
Yeah, I always think there's sort of two levels. It's a subpoena is a requirement of a subpoena is a really good protection as a judge. But then the next level is sorry, we can't comply because we don't have it.
Right.
What level do we want?
But this is one reason we've always been very conservative on keeping records is so that we don't have, we don't even have to say we can't, but we just aren't able to. Don't have.
There, depending on how subpoena was ordered, there may be a situation like if we were trying to find out the last book that was assigned person checked out. The answer would be we can't do it because we have to figure out, can we logistically download how many items they're going to? So download what video records and then in a way that's certain, it's a little bit of a subpoena and before the data.
Right.
Yeah, I think.
But I still think if we can look at just how long do we need the records and.
And I'm worried about like attacks on teachers and librarians right now. If someone wanted to see like who checked out those, these 10 books and it's the same sixth grade teacher, maybe they're. Or we're going to go after them.
Yeah, protecting people and their rights, whatever we need to do.
And I'm not saying there's a better policy. I just think we need to know what our limitations are and it's only we do for stand. So where are we?
We couldn't table it and bring that to Sierra information next month if we want to.
I'd be happy to approve it. And then if you feel like you want to make another amendment.
I think that would be preferred.
Yeah.
I'm up with that.
I don't know if the Sierra portion would need this procedure as opposed to maybe we just have to choose the most information. The policy.
So I'll move a group.
Second. All in favor? Okay. Um, director's report.
Have you answered any questions? Or do any update? I did hear back from Concomitant Taylor and she said, April or May will be time for her for the budget approval decision.
Which property tax backfill? I had no idea, but I couldn't first that at all.
So does anybody want to give a summary of that? Basically, when some changes were made in the, in the city of how different types of property were taxed. That created a gap in what the city was going to take in. So the state offered a backfill program that would um, sort of pro rate the tax income for a set number of years. And those years have run out. And in our community, the biggest impact was um, how multifamily dwellings rental units were taxed. It used to be at a hundred percent. You're not, it's a right for, it used to be at a hundred percent and it was then changed to the residential rate, which was significantly lower.
Yeah.
So commercial property taxes is.
For college students, student housing.
Yeah.
Were vulnerable.
This is the legislature.
Yes, yes. And there were some um, errors in calculation of when that would sort of run out, the backfill process that really kind of came to a pain point. A small, um, some cities that have already approved um, the next six years budget or have prepared that for approval for their councils. Um, the corrective numbers came in after that step had taken place. Which depending on a city's overall finance approach could be pretty significant or, or many.
Are we expecting a hit to our budget? I mean, it was.
No, right now we're not expecting a, to connect your budget. Iowa City has a pretty stable and ultimately conservative saving savings all up to their overall budgeting and right now the city has, uh, city district thinks that we're probably going to hold steady with what was approved, which was again relatively flat, but that's better than a reduction at this point.
Right.
Um, and I think if there was a reduction that would probably just be sort of across the city called to, to sort of cut out, but.
Now looking to that, great.
How about the, when I was reading over the minutes from last month's meeting, it mentioned the library levy possibly being threatened.
For those to be a good time to do, you have the state of updates.
Yeah, we prepared an update to the legislature that we went to. No, this is a great time to do it. Um, because it was in last month's board report really that we outlined it. Um, we just have a verbal, right, what we did because it's changing with every role. But if you want to start with the.
Now, certainly, the levy information. Uh, but there's actually two big property tax reform bills that are on the table. There's one in the House and one in the Senate. Senate file three fifty six is the bill that would talk about the levies. And so that would eliminate the library levy. What we do is it allow cities to take those levies, put them all on a general fund and not be able to distribute them at a fixed fee bit as opposed to having specific levies. And there there's confidence right now that that bill's going nowhere in this particular legislative session. The reason for that is that the House bill has a very drastically different um, property tax bill, which is that they want to only allow a property's assessed valuation to increase three percent a year. Regardless of how property valuations change in the city, which would really impact Iowa City is skyrocket. They're not anywhere near coming close together. But that being said, that's something we're going to have to definitely watch next year. There's going to be some work on doing some property tax reforms. That is a that's a priority for the legislature as well as the governor. We'll just have to watch for those impacts. We need the reorganization bill, which was now numbered Senate file five one four and House file six, six, two passed both the Senate and the House and has gone to the governor for signing, which will sign evidently. Then this moved the state library of Iowa to the Department of Services, remove the oversight capacity of the Commission for Libraries. We don't know what the whole impacts are going to be for us as an organization, but we'll keep the rest of those. And it's going to take a huge amount of time to kind of put that together and to have that implemented in place. That being said, um, thank you for writing the statement. You did get a little bit of traction as elsewhere wrote instructors report that the state, there was a state's under did write in my minutes, didn't pass, but someone read it, someone listened and that was nice. And then Iowa Public Radio will spotlight on. The, some other bills, the education reform bill with the Senate file four nine six, that's the new number of the bill that we were watching for the impacts of the aim card. It had an expansion of the definition to sexually explicit material. Included a provision that written consent from a guardian will be required by, for any student to check out any book on a specific list of a book that was banned in any school library. And that's just in school libraries, but we were worried that with the aim card and having that agreement with the school district, there might be an impact. This bill was passed in the Senate last night, right, Sam?
Yes.
And, uh, but it has an uphill battle in the House. So there's some disagreements in the House about the inclusion of those lists. And but most likely the age appropriate language will stay. So we'll keep up, keep you abreast of that. The other one we talked about last month was visual representation of a minor. Uh, it's on file two, two, one that passed both chambers and has been signed. We'll we'll watch to see if that broader definition of sexual exploitation of a minor and a visual representation. If that has any impact on us, there was some here from the lobbyists that any, like a, any comment that includes sexual activity might be is. And then the last one is Senate file three and one, which was the changes to the teacher librarianship. This bill removed the teacher certification requirement for school librarians. So that would allow public librarians to be hired in those positions. A bill passed, um, but we're seeing that there might be some legal issues tied to that bill because a teacher librarian is under the Department of Education. A public librarian certification is under now, is now under the Department of Administrative Services. Those are different departments. Um, so they have to work out, um, what the, what, who's going to certify to work where. But the next Friday is another final week. Um, and that means that Senate and House will need to be passed by the chamber to be considered in the other chambers. But next week they can only consider bills actually passed by the other chamber. So excitement is coming to an end soon. We promise. Yeah. We still believe in time.
And if anybody is newer or hasn't thought about the library lobby in a while, Iowa City Public Library has the highest possible library lobby in the state. Um, which is a twenty seven special library. Um, we are anxious to see what will happen once this take bigger picture. Um, there are other parts of the bill that speak to create of a lot of tax and other things like that that would essentially increase some tax revenues, but obviously would lose the library designation. Would the community voted for a significant pass rate? Fifty eight percent. And, um, what I see the levy doing is taking the volatility out of, I mean, it's essentially a budget. So it, it gives us a piece that sort of stabilizes. And, you know, we will, we will work with city finance as necessary depending on how things go to, to see how we could manage this long term, but we are one of the few larger libraries in the state that has a significant levy. Um, there are other libraries that have a, a twenty seven cent, but they tend to be smaller, often semi rural or rural.
Um, you mentioned that the city council member was willing to come in April or May. You mentioned it being tied to the budget, but it's tied to this strategic plan. Is that?
He is, I'm sorry.
Okay. I guess my inclination would be to suggest April rather than May because there's two policy reviews in May. I don't know if that's a, a reason or not, but.
Fair reason.
It's good.
Okay. So maybe you can ask her if she, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Before we leave, also a sweet point is Robin and I were both at Drag Family Storytime and I'll, I'll just speak myself. The staff did a remarkable job of organizing and, and running that event. It was, um, hence a very difficult situation and um, despite what you read in the paper, nothing happened. Um, there were words were exchanged. You know, that was, that was about the extent of it. Um, and I'll also say that, um, in addition to Officer Bailey, there were, I talked to three or four other city staff members who came over just to be supportive. I think that's a that's a great thing for the library. Staff wanted to show their support.
Um, yeah, I think Steph did a great time. Did a great job and really deescalated a situation. I'm not sure if I agree. There was only verbal altercation.
I don't know who touched who, but let's say it was not Ruckus.
That was not Ruckus.
Well, there wasn't.
Having been during the room and standing there, I mean, there was invasion of personal space.
Yes.
Active invasion of personal space. However, I, I do have a question about it. Um, when we have a protester, it becomes an obstruction to the delivery of services. Um, as the one person standing in the middle of the program so that you was blocking children could not fully participate. Do we have a more freedom to say to the person, you're now disrupting our ability to work within our mission. And the people who are protesting, testing, protesting on the edge, who I spoke with rather extensively, and I thought they were going to come tonight, actually, um, are different to me than a person who stands in the middle of children to intimidate. And I'm wondering, what are our rights to say, you're stopping, you're stopping the mission of the library at this point?
So that particular instance was, um, something that Kevin Bailey and I talked about there. And he actually spoke to legal team from the program to make sure we were following the right procedure with that. Because there was technically room to move around in the space and the people behind that person.
Have received it.
Could have somewhere to go that they would be able to see.
So one person doing it is okay. Three or four people that were taking up more physical space would be a problem.
I think if, if, if we could have said the person, the person or people are blocking, that people don't have other option there. So they, there's not another place where they can go to see or hear or whatever the issue is. That is different. I think then, uh, we could have asked them to move and the, the, if needed, an officer could have.
I mean, it's a tense moment when you have someone in the middle who don't sign.
I will say, I was talking to Sergeant Bailey about that. He said, you know, e- even if I could remove him.
You could ask.
That's probably not what we want the kids to remember about today.
Right.
Cause he he said, I know the guy, he's it it's gonna be ugly.
Yeah, I'm just saying in terms of of policy or setting rules, cause I think the step did a very good job of saying.
Yeah.
Allow families with children to be at front and people without children to sit towards the back. It's that this person didn't follow this policy and do we have. An opportunity to to address it in any way. I understand why the decisions were made there, but looking proactively, I don't think this issue's over.
And we did talk about too, that I mean, it's caught on several two different tapes from that day. Of him not complying with any staff request. Um and we talked with Sergeant Bailey about that as well um to.
He was baiting everyone.
Yeah, um about whether or not, no, not doing anything like else were saying confrontational during the program, but um.
Yeah.
That Bailey Sergeant Sergeant Bailey may follow up with um that individual later. Letting him know that he failed to comply with staffing us, but we've never that they're not that conversation.
And we talked a lot about typically for that kind of program, like when they have put chairs in the back, certainly not that number of chairs. But I think who did give um space for people who were there without children um. And you know, I think we learn more every time we do these programs and. I think that the designated seating on the floor, despite one person ignoring that um. To me felt like a a step in the right direction and also a lot of adults sitting in the back. Um it continues to frustrate me that um. You know, children were sort of in the hall because we were at capacity and we had a number of adults that. Um it took to stay in the program and that's that's their right, they can do that. Um we talked with legal quite a bit about that too. But um what are the what are the rules about allowing staying that you can't come without a child um? And that's um it's just reasonable.
However, could an announcement be made to say the children who can't enter the room because we're beyond capacity? Cause I think if we put the children as the part of it, I'm I'm not sure what would have happened, but I'm thinking you probably thought this through.
One thing that we tried with this one was to uh but really Mary Reddington was was the driver of this. I think it worked really well was to. For limit the idle time between doors opening and programs starting, so she did sort of a a quick like general big story time. Welcome, we try to listen, we try to not speak over each other and then go because it felt like. I'm sort of surging at his heart there and uh that I think we, so I think there are a few things we did this time that we're gonna do that we would. Certainly implement again um. And and I will say that we've had not a lot, of just a very few comments, not even. Really made to us, but we've seen on social media or things like that questioning the decision to have an officer there. And we knew, we talked at length about, um we know that that is comforting to some populations, uh discomfort to some populations. And sometimes can escalate things, but in the end we we decided that was the right step and. You know, I I gave quite a bit of information to police chief about. What the event was, why we were requesting an officer, what our vision for the officer and the staff interaction to to look like. And I I couldn't have been more pleased with Officer Sergeant Bailey, who I didn't already share this, he was uh. Uh he does, yeah, he was playing for pride every year and. He was very confident about first amendment, we want to be um and and I thought his overall program. Would be really good for the program. Um it makes me think though. As we communicate about this and that with the public, that is a piece that we could talk about is why did we make the proactive decision to um to have.
I think it was a good idea. I'd like to say more of them here actually for events like this. My concern is the children. My concern is that some highly unstable person, y'all know what I mean. Can do something even worse. And I think that one police officer, especially if you have another one of these events. That's gonna be, you know, highly populated by children, especially. I don't care about adults as much because they're gonna have at it. One way or the other, but in fact, I thought in this event, the children acted more mature than the adults. On both sides of the political spectrum. Uh from what I observed on streaming video, um but you know, I'm I'm really concerned about the safety. And uh. Uh you know, I'm not saying I'm against these events. I know that there are probably people who know me, know that I'm conservative. Um evangelical Christian, I'm not saying that we shouldn't have these events, in fact. I would, I'm in favor of it, actually. My 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 take on it is that if you don't like it, don't attend it. But don't uh it doesn't need to be banned. Um but I'm just, my main concern is 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 the safety issue and uh. If there's another event like this and you know, a bunch of people decide, you know, they're gonna have more protesters or. You know, whoever's organizing this, um you know, that's 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 my concern. If we could have, you know, maybe two officers or something. I think that in the end. You know, I was a parent once upon a time, three children and um you know, I would have been comforted. More more so if I saw people running around with signs and they're swearing and using all that kind of language. Um I would have, I would have been more comforted in knowing at least there's there's some protection here. I I don't know, I mean, is there, is there a way to? I mean, we can't say, I I understand we can't say, for instance, well, if you don't have children, you can't come here. Or you have to, you know, have a childhood to kind of, it's your ticket of entrance or whatever, but is there a way to make it so? Now I'd have to go down and look at this area again, but is there a way to make it so only children can be in that area and not? All these other, you know, take the adults and put them in the back of the room.
I don't know if we could do that, I'd be worried about that being a slippery slope.
We did, we asked the legal that specifically um. And they said no, we did, they did talk to us about saying um at children and family storytimes. Or events that we could say no signage um in future ones, but we did not have enough time to, that would. Re- require opening several policies and getting to you to to approve and we did not have enough time to.
And it would be no sign as at programs, period. And I think that's a conversation.
Yeah, and we just, there was not enough time for any leadership team to besides Ellsworth and I to discuss that. Um we did talk um as um we, the public relations team watched um the online chatter. We did talk, I went multiple times and said, do we need more than an officer? And you know, Ellsworth would um. Um email back and forth with Sergeant Bailey and um he had a plan. Um I think he also did a great job because he had another officer drop him off instead of having a squad car downtown. Um but there was another officer within the area that would come and um essentially be a backup or just pick him up when it was over.
What about the safety of the the uh folks that were doing the actual story time?
Um we um talked to Mary Anderson, um who's um a children's programmer, talked to. Um all of the performers ahead of time and um. And we, and the three that were here also were here at the last one in October. Um so we kind of talked about, let's get here a little bit earlier so we can have you arrive at the staff entrance and we'll let you come in that way. We put up a screen, um a wall divider um that was right off of the meeting room. Exit and right into our staff area. That way Mary um could escort them out right that way and those doors do say staff. Only and so since they were invited guests, they are considered staff, so they could be back in that area, but no one else would be able to go back to that.
Okay, cause I am concerned about them, obviously.
Yeah, um after the last time, um we were two, several of us escorted them out of the building. Um after the last program um and walked with them either to their vehicles or um and this time um. It there, it didn't seem like there was a need for, they didn't ask for it this time um. And I think it helped that um as soon as we got done with the uh the family story time. We had to turn around and set up the room for a hundred and twenty five um kids to come and play bingo. It's like, all right, everyone has to go, cause we just started bringing out tables and everyone just kind of dispersed.
Oh wow.
Um we also strategically and um very thoughtfully moved um the craft portion up to the children's room. Um and I am.
Right.
No adults followed the parents and the kids up to the story time room. I am so glad that that space was um. Was respected and and kept um as it typically is, it's just children and families. Um and so, cause in October we had done the craft right down there. Um in the same area in the meeting room space and that allowed people to linger in the rooms, so. Um by moving it up to the story time room um and out of that space, it really dispersed the the group out, so.
Okay, well.
Safety is the driving in our conversation. I mean, followed by enjoyment. We want the teaching environment that kids can enjoy themselves in and sort of weighing all that together. In this case, I felt like um Sergeant Bailey had to have like a sort of plan for getting back in the community and. He didn't, we didn't reach that threshold um, but that will absolutely be part of the next next conversation, even if it was sort of, what about having. Someone in the lobby and someone in the room, even just during the beginning and sort of get.
Yeah, well, I like the idea of limiting the time that people have to kind of go around.
Right.
From my observation, most of the time on the sort of lobby, the rest of the time. From what I could see, much or all of the conflict, the heated conversations were um. Sets of adults that had come without children.
Yeah.
And I think that a lot of the people who have come with children were sort of busy tending to the children, so that was either finding the last mitten or going to the children's room.
Sure.
And I I'm not saying that was exclusively what happened, but it felt to me like that was, there was definitely pain point there.
Okay.
So, so my perspective again might be a little bit different. So I sat with the protesters because the staff had asked would. Some of the people who were in support actually sit in the front row and make eye contact. And we had a chance to talk to some of them. And I just wanna say a couple of things. Um one thing is I found the parents that were most concerned, it was about the videotaping. The taping and the right to privacy. And I think we need to make clear about what the rules are about. Taping children in a public space and what we can and can't do. Um cause I think that was a major concern, intimidation of being filmed. Um second thing is I, some of the protesters. When the protesters I talked to after and I thanked them for allowing me to sit there with them. And for not harassing the children, cause they didn't, um their presence was intimidating. But a few of them said, look, we're here to, we're here because we don't want to buy that the children are opposed to the parents. But I think there was some common ground in saying, you know, they didn't, now, not everyone they wanted to disrupt. There were some. People there who were very aggressive. Um so I, you know, I hasn't put everyone in one category. Because there were some real aggressors, but not everyone was. And then there's someone to share. An interesting comment um on behalf of the staff where there was someone who was sitting in this group, I think I was the only one sitting there. Kind of participating, so is that where your position began, but someone behind me turned and said to her husband. This isn't what you told me it was gonna be. This was great. You told me it was gonna be a strip show. There's an educational, I mean, there it was just one of those conversations over here. I think there was a an educational community building of saying, this is the reality and. This is what the noise is about. It's simply story time.
Yeah.
Um so I I really I value that, but I also thought. It was vulnerable for that person to say to the other one, this isn't what you told me it was gonna be. So there were some parts, I just think we had some aggressive. People that were who were waiting for an explosion. They wanted to invade space.
Individual who you told Sergeant Bailey the same thing. He's like, I came here and I didn't.
Yes.
Realize this is what it was going to be. This, he's like, there's a lot of good families here.
Right, these are families in the right.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I I just want to make sure it wasn't an us versus them, it was a lot of community members, some of whom were in a highly inappropriate.
And I think, and someone needs to correct me, right, there there were at least a small group that came. That you'd have to fairly call counter protesters that came, you know.
Right.
Uh so.
Or there was an interaction between the two.
Yeah, and people came with signs, they kind of, you know, supporting the event, which again is fine, although I would really encourage discussion of a no sign policy.
Because some of those signs were really just just.
And and they block views as people.
And they could be used for, you know, wax someone.
Exactly, as I told Elton at the university, we had a no sticks on signs policy.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good idea.
That one gentleman, I mean, he had a very large, looked like a large camera, looked like a large sign, I thought.
So you know, I told the people I said, would come to the trustees and talk about it there, don't do it here.
Yeah.
Um and that's why I thought maybe one or two would come for us.
Not interested.
They did say, thank you for letting us know that there's room for us to come um. You know, they didn't show, but I think it's just easy to say it was a, it was a two different groups. I think it was a mixture of people and there were a few really aggressive people.
So you can ban signs, but you just need to do it across the board, I don't know.
Did you do it as like a regular um?
Programming policy.
To the programming order of behavior policy, probably, but. Um can be excluded, we would have to define what is a sign. If I come with a sign on a stick, I'm told there's no sign and I take the sign off the stick and I tape it to my hair. Side, um so there is a new add to to what that looks like, but um city legal. I mean, it's sound doable. I think we would just want to make sure that everybody was in agreement to what that meant and what the um implementation of the change would be like.
And and you'll never be able to exclude all messages. I mean, someone.
Have a teacher made up their message.
Yeah, that's fine. But that doesn't block anyone's view, it's not.
Doesn't necessarily intimidate.
Right, so.
What was the, what were for the, you know, cause you don't, you don't get that on camera, what, what? What were the children making of all this? I mean, were they sort of not paying attention to it or was, were they?
It was not as noticeable, it was not as noticeable as last time. Last time there were kids, um especially when they were walking in. Um uh it was in the hallway with a lot of the protesters the last time and they were kind of surrounding me and I think that was a little scary. To see um a group of men verbally attacking their librarian and um. This time we kind of, there was more people, we held people out in the lobby, so there were more people out there. It was not as intimidating when people, when families walked in. Um the room was crowded, really crowded this time, so kids could not get up and move as well. Um but the last time the room wasn't crowded and kids really with, there were so many individuals standing in the back. Um kind of just towering over everyone. So there was a lot of standing the last time and kids did not move around as much. This time I'd say they didn't move around as much, cause there was really no room to.
The vast majority of the room were, I would say, were respectful to the performance. So there was a, there was, with four hundred people, you're gonna have a little chatting and things, but there wasn't um any heckling or any shouting. Um and I was, I was surprised with, I guess, how the kids did seem. Um and maybe it just felt to them like, well, there's an audience sort of sitting in the back and I'm with my family unit and we're here to watch this. Um I think, you know, kids are pretty perceptive and when there were sort of arguments before and after the story time. I think that there was some sort of whynite expression and maybe holding closer to their adults, but. Um during the event, I, it did seem like kids were enjoying it and able to eat um. Fairly typically.
Yeah, so just for clarification, if a parent publicly says to someone, do not record my child. Do they have any rights whatsoever?
So I can't answer that since I'm not a lawyer, but what I know, what's we can go about this event is. Because the library is a public place, we can't. We can't say no.
But not for us to get public, does the parents, as the custodian of the child, have a right to say?
Recording, the way it was recorded in the newspaper article. And the policeman was saying that you you really can't, it's a public space and so.
We also do allow it for our.
But I saw, but I saw parents standing up saying, please stop recording my child. You're intimidating my child. And those are the ones. That I wish you could. That I wish you could have advocated for, but I didn't know what. Do we have any flexibility to say they've asked you to stop recording their child? Um, so I I just, I'm just clarifying, like, do we have any way to protect the family units here to say? They just asked you to stop that, let's. They they were actively doing it to upset the parent, but. You know, just to check, do we have any, again, it's it's obstruction of us being able to deliver a program.
I will ask.
I'm not. Sorry. Yeah. Do you think that this, the, I guess, the attendance was impressive, I will say that. Um. Do you think that's due to kind of the, you know, the heightened awareness, I guess, of all the legislation into doing right now?
I mean, the rest of the week you had. Several hundred of those. Um, certainly some of the adult, especially other company adults, um. Were there.
All hyped up about that.
Because of the topic. Um. But I think if it had been a. Um.
Well, we.
Very round of three time or a different one, we probably would have.
It was. Not a, um, in. Uh, June of twenty eighteen, I think, was our highest drag family storytime attendance. Um, we had. Well over four hundred in the room, um and I turned away about a hundred and twenty-five that day. Um, but it was also on the day of the pride parade and it was raining outside, uh, so people were um waiting for the parade and they came in to. Um, to enjoy the show. Um, so it is. It is on, you know, on scale of another storytime that we had that.
Okay.
The other drag family story.
I will say there were, there seemed to be a decent number of people who had never been to the library. Um, the reason I think that is maybe they asked, you know, how do we get to the storytime room? We have a bathroom nearby, um, or said, this was the first time we've been to the library.
Laborally.
Yeah, so.
Well, that's a good.
I think it's it's a positive.
Yeah, well, thank you to the staff, though. I'd like to thank all of you too. I did a great job.
We were five library course time, obviously, in the first ten minutes, so that didn't happen.
Thank you again, Eldred, for the communication with that and and after.
Well, I think much appreciated.
Do we have a policy about photographing in the library?
Thank you for improving people. Library is the crown and the jewel, the jewel and the crown of I would say.
We explicitly say that we do not, I mean, anybody can photograph others in. A meeting room or event, is that the way you do it at a program? Um, and then. In the rest of the library, I mean, it's still a public place. But we typically, I mean, we have much less of an issue in the rest of the library when we ask people. To to photograph from behind so that faces aren't visible. Um. But my understanding right now is that we actually may not be able to tell them that anywhere. Even, you know, our policy can't override. Um.
I just speaking, I asked that film crews do not do it at this public service points where people are showing books because that is an election privacy concern, but I'm not sure what level you can have it as part of.
Yeah, when we're working with somebody who is asks us or is cooperative, we would always ask that. We prefer, if you're gonna do like a news interview with a staff person, have a range of books or a wall behind you instead of. Other patrons, um, we try to protect that as much as we can, um.
It'd be very hard to en- enforce it because it's, you can. Photograph my destiny now, anybody can. I mean, it used to be, you had to hold it up. Your eyes, it was quite, you know, obvious, but now.
I think this was aggression.
Yeah.
In the recording at this event.
Yeah.
Maybe it was right, but people phone, putting phones across from each other.
Yeah, yes.
Good gracious. Oh, Angie, I had, sorry, I had one more question. Is there any, um. Did you hear anything from the Queens on whether or not they would be less interested in returning? That's that's something I'm worried.
Um.
Right up, ready to go, cool.
Anything else on this topic? No. Okay, departmental reports, um. Anna, no, Jason's up.
Uh, I just realized that the crowning and she. Right on your packet. I'm gonna show you.
Oh, no.
But the L gets cut off and the D gets cut off.
Oh, okay.
You saw, I don't know why I said.
Right, because I left.
That's a lot better, yeah. I thought this was great. I saw a letter. I found it, but.
Right, you found it, like.
Yeah.
The translation from stock to P.
Tale as old as time.
And it's also installed from. The CES report because technically I didn't.
So when people ask us what company we want to recreate and what's.
That was, it's kind of cool to think of it more as like farewell over to.
Yeah.
She did a really good job of all of her.
Yes, it's brilliant.
And this social work thing is working out well.
Yeah, we met, um. Uh, Grace, um, met yesterday for her first um meeting with staff. It's a drop in, but it was on the top of crisis and dimension. Um, was, um. I did not get to his name this morning, so I'm not sure. People are able to drop to that one. There's a duplication of yesterday's for. And it was multi-departments yesterday, different job classes. So it was really nice to talk through. Many things that we've talked through as a group in other ways, but just nice to have Grace's perspective. Practicing social work, but also. At school and um her learning how we. Interact with folks in school as well and um. Talk through scenarios and also. I came, I attended so I could sort of be the liaison for staff in case they got into sort of HR territory. Um, and in ways some, with some good ideas about how training. Especially specifically temporary hourly. So.
Hmm.
It's been really, really positive. Her next one will be on trafficking. She's also just sort of taking in. New ideas as we go along. And we have a little team staff finally, which is so happy. So maybe there's not to work five days a week. And we have somebody on weekends, so. We're excited and we know it's super great. Very invested in use of I O C and share everything, start from. You know, every time you open those jobs, you kind of wonder if you find it, is the right thing. So. You can go through a lot of interviews of people who just. Are great people and just love libraries, but you're waiting for that one person to say, sweet. You know, I really want to work with you. It's, it's funny how few there are. Why don't you tell them like the job actually gains or.
They just slowly stand up and walk backwards out. I'll just write a check, it'll be fine.
Okay, wonderful. Um, Sam, your report, do people have questions, comments? I'm sorry, the Freedom to Read event had to move indoors.
It did. I, whenever the book will go can be present somewhere, it obviously drives a lot of joy for me, but the fact that um. We have a band, I'll be seeing I'm archive doing, I think it's this one, isn't it? Space home, remember that. The whole bill has been invited to the trans and county fair for a short time, so I feel like we even though it's honored.
I guess what's really bad is the weather's not nice. Okay, um.
I wanted to call out specifically I L A legislative day and just everyone that participated in. We think of uh Captain America because uh there's, there's a some quote from Captain America and paraphrasing here, but basically um. When things are difficult, you plant your feet and someone's telling you to move and you say, no, you move. And that's what I felt, what I saw out of.
I just made fun of Gavel, just saying, that was interesting to get through. Maybe cash show.
Okay, um, Katie, your report's up next.
I don't know if you can answer any questions or provide any details in one of your slides.
That's important, but thank you for the update on the events from McBees today.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want to go to McBees afterwards. Um, it's a wonderful place called I O C Public Fiber.
And they're ready for you. I went before we came here. They're ready.
Sorry, what was that last name?
I said, they're ready. I went before I came here.
Oh, great.
I'll be. Are you guys doing this? And I said, yeah, yeah, yeah.
How much events like that generally?
Oh, anywhere between four and seven hundred dollars, yeah. Um, yeah.
That's more than.
And we've been doing additional promotions um on the, on this events. We just are emailing our body of donors and we know that this stuff's going on, so. Yeah, we're hoping, we're hoping for a nice turnout at this point. We have a line fundraiser on Friday. And, and then the foundation is also helping to support. Brother tree on Saturday.
News articles were interesting, but you can all read those. President's report, as usual, I don't really have a report. Um, the nominating committee has met, but. It's a work in progress and we'll be announcing our. Slate of officers at the next meeting. Um. Also, at the next meeting, I am to report or to appoint two people to be the board representatives of the Library Foundation. Boards, so if that interests you or if it doesn't, but you're willing to do it. Let me, it is, I I, my standard thing is cuz I did it for a couple of years and and it was very valuable because. Um, it will help me understand better how the the two boards work together and. A real appreciation for how. Are the the foundation works and what a significant contribution they make to the library. So. It, to me, it is really a very worthwhile thing to do. Um. I would encourage people, I'm tagging. Onto what Katie said is to attend the wine thing and the Freedom to Read event. If you have a spare few minutes on. Saturday afternoon to stop by. The wine event, um. I've been once last. It kept moving it last year. Some somehow the date. Somehow the date kept changing and finally it settled on a date when I was out of town, so I didn't go. But, and then I did go the last one before COVID and it's really fun. It's really, I I recommend it. It's a. It's kind of a fun thing. Um.
Then our. We did have a meeting of the Governance Committee for Friends Foundation on Monday.
Okay.
Um. The only uh big thing that we we were talking about had to do with a minor reorganization um that will affect uh the book end. Katie could probably speak to it with more detail, but that is something that we will bring to the Friends Foundation Board, but does not require um our board action.
Okay. All right, um. And and there's no other. I know, I noticed that the next meeting was like the twenty-seventh, so I've been asking if there was a report, but I didn't realize you were on the Governance Committee. So you've gone above and beyond cuz you don't actually have to be on a committee. I thought you did.
Stop it now now.
I thought you did, so I signed up for the fundraising committee. The next year I realized I have to be on a committee.
It's so fun.
Yeah, I never did that. Anyway, good for you because you're you're more involved that way. Okay, announcements from members. None. Committee reports, um. Oh, we had, we had the Governance Committee and the. The Officer Nominated Committee, I sort of, it it's not ready to report yet. Um. Communications, we saw the email. He, he was very complimentary of the staff and. The consent agenda is next, um. I need, if there are no. Changes or corrections, I need a motion to approve it. There are.
Move.
Yeah. Okay. Need a second? All in favor?
Right, I.
Great. Okay, um. Then the agenda for next month doesn't have any policy reviews. Will appoint to the Foundation Board and elect our officers. Um. The third quarter financials and statistics will be in that packet, right? Did you want to meet for half an hour before the meeting like we did last time? Okay, it it's, okay. I'll touch base with Claire on that. Um. And then we'll hear from the City Council person about the strategic plan. I think that would be interesting to see how we. Okay. In that case, we don't vote on the agenda for the meeting, right? At this point.
No.
Okay. Therefore, I think I'm ready to adjourn the meeting.